Now open for the public for any comments regarding the three budget amendment ordinances that are being presented this evening. Any member of the public who would like to speak to the three budget amendments that are being presented this evening? One more time, any member of the public who would like to speak to the three budget amendments that are being presented this evening?
Mr. McGinley, I would like to ask as a public, on the public?
Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Griffith.
Okay, when we were introducing that ordinance, there were five people that voted no. I mean, I would like their input as to the no vote, so maybe when it comes time to vote, I may change my mind if there's some compelling argument as to why they voted no.
We'll have a chance when we vote on it to offer that under the question, right?
All right, very, very good.
Yes, we'll have a chance for people to offer that. Anyone else in the public? If not, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved, who was that?
Chris.
Chris Perry?
Walter, second.
Mr. Griffith, your second, then?
Yes, sir.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. We will be convening again for the voting session at 6:01. So we have about 15 minutes.
Do we have to log out and into a different?
Jared, do we have to log out or are we okay with this meeting?
We utilize the same meeting for council meetings for public, so it'll be the same meeting.
Same meeting, everybody hear that?
Yep, thanks.
Okay.
Thanks.
Very good.
Hello? Hello?
Mr. Snee?
Yes, Mr. Snee.
Okay, we'll be starting in four minutes.
Steve here.
Oh, okay, good. We'll be starting in a couple of minutes, Steve.
Rich Manta here.
Okay, it's 6:01, we're going to call a meeting to order. We're going to begin with a pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence, please. I've asked everybody to stand where they're located, and we'll pledge the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and just and pure. Thank you, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
President.
Mr. Hogg?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Seddon?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present. Thank you.
The President.
I'd ask everybody to mute their phones or their audio till they're speaking, please, so we don't have any other feedback. Recognition ceremony and proclamations, we have none for this meeting. additions or deletions from the voting session agenda.
Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead, Ms. Griffith.
Could we switch items nine and 10, please?
That's no problem, but that-
Switch, bring the other one up above it for the committee.
That's no problem, this is additions or deletions.
Okay.
Do we have any of those?
No, I have nothing else.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye. 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 Any in opposition, any abstentions? Motion, no motions heard, motion carries, thank you. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding requirement of a majority of participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Ms. Houck?
So moved.
Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Sheila.
Statement? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition, any abstentions?
Aye.
Yeah, abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Down to the next motion. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to extent that the current format is inconsistent with the terms of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Radel, do we have a second for Ms. Radel?
Second, Snee.
Mr. Snee? On the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries, we're down to public comment on voting session agenda items, please. Members of the public who would like to speak in regards to items on the voting session agenda.
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Rabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Rabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to item number six, for the motion to adopt the resolution for the real estate investment, I would like to know, you know, as when I heard on the work session last meeting, I was kind of confused as to why Luzerne County is the one who's the guarantor of this grant and not like the redevelopment or the industrial development authorities, since if there's an agreement to reimburse the ineligible costs, that it wouldn't fall on the county taxpayers. Maybe you did, maybe you asked the developer to clarify that, but I did not hear it, so if you can maybe have him touch upon that again, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Also, with regards to items eight, nine, and 10, I am, I've been in favor of the committee for policies and procedures at the prison for four years, and I'm in favor of it still. I think it needs to be done because I think we need to stay on top of the happenings at the prison, not only does the council need to stay on top of it, but the also the public.
If people would mute their phones or audio, please, go ahead, Ms. Rabo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will finish up by saying, we are, you know, this meeting is important and almost, you know, kind of ironic in terms of timing, because, Mr. Chairman, today is the eve of the 123rd anniversary of the Latimer massacre, that happened on September 10th, 1783, where 19 miners were shot dead by Luzerne County Sheriff, at the orders of Luzerne County Sheriff, and the deputy, the people that he deputized at the time to disperse the protester, or the miners that were protesting for their right to have, to see their doctor, the doctor they choose, and to have a few cents increase in their wage. I find it, you know, almost karma and fate that this meeting is occurring now, and I think that the council and should be cognizant and aware that, you know, history is not a kind judge in the future. So I think what needs to happen is the council should take that under consideration when it comes to these matters today, because the rights of people can't be just trivialized and dismissed. We need to be, we need to be cognizant because the Constitution applies to everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. Manta here.
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
I have to ask a question, and I will, I will ask my questions, and then I will wait for an answer from anyone in the county council or the chairman. We have a due process of a person if they're going to be tried with a jury, okay? So, I'm trying to explain this as simple as I can. We pick people that are in the public to address problems with someone after they're arrested, correct? Yes. We pick a jury of our peers to adjudicate over something that has happened bad or wrong. So, maybe I'm just naive about the situation, but maybe it should be, the county should say, okay, let's pick some civilian people to look at this problem, it doesn't have to be $75,000 lawyers, it doesn't have to be, it's a jury of your peers adjudicate over whether you're guilty or not, and it's not lawyers that are picked, it's just common people, am I correct, Mr. Vog? Is that, that's, I'm sort of steering it towards that way, and I don't want to call anybody out on it, but they picked the jury of 12 people to adjudicate a problem in the courts. Why can't they pick a jury of civilian people with county council people and adjudicate over the prison, have a prison board of civilians that, you know, they don't have to be elected, they can be picked, or they can put in their resume as like a retired police officer, a retired lawyer. uh, a retired police officer, a retired lawyer, or a retired military person, or someone, you know, that is credible enough to say, "We think this is wrong, and we think that is okay." So, I, this is my question. I'll, I'll, I'll sit back and listen to an answer. Thank you very much.
I don't think you have an answer to that, Mr. Mantle. When we get to that on the agenda, I'm sure you'll hear some other comments from other people, members of the council, how they feel about it and why. Uh, and also, I think you'll probably get some information from the solicitor if necessary.
Oh, one, one, one more question I have.
No, you, uh, you're, I'm sorry, you have another chance at the end. Other members of the public?
Ronald Knapp?
Go ahead, Mr. Knapp.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley, Chair. Um, with regards to Mr. Tahin Mackey's death at Luzerne County Prison, I thank Luzerne County for considering move forward in an independent study of the incident. The issue of late Tahin Mackey and his passing is unfortunate. We certainly do not want to fuel the flames that has been gaining heat that individuals death and law enforcement involved in those deaths around the country. Now as to how the selection of the T- Trottman Pepper lawyers had come about, was there firm drawn from a pool of reputable investigative sources? I mean, how did they come into the equation? Then there's the seventy-five thousand dollars that will be paid out of Luzerne County taxpayers' pockets. After all, we have the grunt of the distribution of funds. I've read about the seven cases that Trottman Pepper lawyers have handled, and I was wondering if they can provide to Luzerne County Council and concerned residents with what they're finding were in those cases they investigated. It would be a good idea to see how the firm decided in each case presented and presided over. As such, I feel it is impertinent to select an outside party which be selected from Luzerne County Council, so there is not the appearance of bias in the whole process from start to finish. For Mr. or manager of bedraise to have selected this reputable group of lawyers, start the whole thing off with a bad look to Luzerne County Council and taxpayers. In this case regarding late Tahin Mackey, which county had agreed to the settlement of three million, of which fifty thousand in fact county taxpayers will pay out, and the insurance, the remaining, I feel to compensate the firm in the amount of seventy-five thousand would be nothing short of paying for a not guilty finding. I think it's very important that we move forward with further investigation from an outside independent entity, and I appreciate Luzerne County considering this move for the peace of our valley and the peace throughout our country. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Brian Shiner?
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
On tonight's agenda, item number eight, I'm reading the resolution, and it says, "The Luzerne County Council hereby request the District Attorney of Luzerne County to use her discretion to request the Office of Attorney General to conduct a criminal investigation into circumstances surrounding Mr. Mackey's death. I take issue with this, and I do so because she has already used her discretion. To ask her to use her discretion again makes no sense. This needs to be a directive from the council requesting her to turn this matter over to the Office of Attorney General, not to use her discretion in doing so. That she's already done. Also, a few years back, a group of us, at least one other person is on this line right now who was involved in this conversation, uh, we approached the DA, and we asked her in the courthouse rotunda about how we handle filing charges for violations of the codes and, and the charter of Luzerne County. And Ms. Alantus told us at that point and a few other times after that, that she would be unable to handle any complaints that involve the executive or legislative branch, because it would be a conflict of interest for her to investigate them, due to the fact that they provide and approve her budgets. So if she can't investigate a charge of violation of our charter or violation of our county codes because it's a conflict, then how does she feel she can investigate a death within the executive branch's jurisdiction? I think she needs to declare this a conflict and turn the entire matter over to the Office of Attorney General. You don't get to play it both ways. If you can't handle a charge brought by a citizen over what's going on to, in the legislative or executive branch of our government, then you certainly can't do an investigation of wrongdoing. A conflict is a conflict. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Uh, hi, Jason Carr, Salersburg, Pennsylvania.
Go ahead, Mr. Carr.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Knapp and, and Mr. Shiner bring up some great points, and I think that the council now has to act, uh, autonomously from both the, the influence of the county manager and also from the district attorney, and take them out of the equation, and make a decision on their own to rectify the position that they find themselves in, where there is not a real clear view of what really happened with Mr. Mackey. Um, I appreciate that all of the items on the agenda try to, uh, take that into consideration, uh, but so- something needs to be done. Uh, the citizens of Luzerne County do need, uh, definitive answers as to who the participants were, what happened, why did it happen, and why did the gentleman die? And I think talking about this two years later is a great disservice to the life of Mr. Mackey, uh, and I think this, the county is extremely fortunate that another occurrence has not happened within that time. Uh, I, being on these meetings for the last, um, four months, listening to this issue being brought forward, uh, it's still being passed around, uh, almost like a hot potato, with no one wanting to take responsibility. And again, I, I feel that the county is extremely fortunate that another death hasn't occurred, and obviously, at the end of the day, hopefully persons are held accountable for what did happen. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Members of the public who would like to speak at this time? Okay, let's go down to the first agenda item, which is the minutes of the August 25th voting session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Houck made the motion. Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Sheila.
Ms. Segman? On the question? All favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No. Urban?
Mr. Urban? Any extensions? Unheard, motion carries. Moving over to item number one on the county manager section. Motion to adopt the ordinance and enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Hanover Township for repair and dedication of the Division Street Bridge in accordance with the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law, Act 177, 1998, previously adopted as Act 180 of 1972. This is one of the, uh, public hearings that we had a little bit earlier this evening. Do we have a motion?
Present, it's Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas, you might be muted.
Yes. Do you hear me now, guys?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Your vote is yes or no, please?
My vote is a yes.
Oh, thank you so much. Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Uh, with this action, then the bridge will go under the ownership of Hanover Township and re- be removed from the county's ownership, which is one of the goals we've had for a long time, to transfer ownership of some of the roads and bridges to the municipal governments in the county, so that's a very good step, I think, for the county. Number two, motion to adopt the ordinance, adopting, amending the 2020 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County Human Services. Again, this is one of the, uh, public hearings that we had ear- earlier. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck? Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Leanne.
McDermott? On the question?
On the question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McGinley, there was five people that voted no to introduce this ordinance.
Right.
I'm prepar- I am, I am prepared to vote on this ordinance, however, I don't want to be remiss if there's something I may be missing along the way. So, if I could get some input from those five that voted not to introduce it, as to their rationale may, may be helpful for me, so I don't make a misstep on my vote. So if I could get some input, I would appreciate it.
Anybody would like to respond to Mr. Griffith's comments about no votes from the last meeting?
Hi, well, Mr. Chair. Harry Haas? Yeah, I plan, I fully plan on supporting this, Walter. I thought it was another light item, and then when I realized the error, I, I realized it was only introduction anyway, so, um, I'm make a, make a fuss about it, but I, I fully support it.
Okay. Um-
Anyone else?
Mr. Schnee, the same.
Same? Very good. Anyone else?
Same for Vog.
Same for Mr. Vog? Anyone else? Well, you heard from three people, Mr. Griffith.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, thank you.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
unanimous tonight, so, uh, a little bit of a change from two weeks ago. Moving down to number three, motion to adopt the ordinance, amending the 2020 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, the Office of Aging. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Houck? Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee? On the question?
On the question?
Yep.
I, I have the same question on this one. There were three people that voted no, but they helped me to understand if, in fact, I need to know more information as to why they voted no.
Anyone who voted no on the ordinance regarding the Office of the Aging? Like to respond to, Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Chair, Harry Haas again?
Yes.
I voted yes for it, and that's because that's when I realized what I originally voted for, so, I'm sure that, anyway, my two cents.
Just heard from one person, I guess, Mr. Griffith. Okay?
Okay.
Roll call.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Down to number four, motion to adopt the ordinance, amending the 2020 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County District Attorney's Office. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Segman? Do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? On the question? I think that would pass unanimously the last time, Mr. Griffith, I'm, I'm pretty sure. Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Moving down to number five, motion to adopt the resolution blessing a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Segman, do we have a second for Ms. Segman?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to adopt the resolution approving KBJ Real Estate Investment LLC Cooperation Dividend Agreement for grant funding for the KBJ Startup Community Project and authorizing Luzerne County to reimburse the Commonwealth or the Commonwealth of ineligible costs. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Let's go.
Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Do we have a second for Ms. Segman?
Second, Kendra.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. On the question?
On the question?
Go ahead.
The, the email that we received from the chief solicitor, the language in that states that that should be an ordinance, so I'm assuming that we probably should not pass this as a resolution, if we pass it at all. Uh, but my other issue is that the host municipality can certainly be the city of Wooksbury rather than the county of Luzerne. I don't think it's fair to the county residents to be on the hook for any kind of expenditures that may come across as a, a result of the development for people who live in Hazelton, for instance, that would be have, be responsible for that because they're county residents. So I, I am going to make a motion to table this and have them go back to the city, and have the city get to be the host municipality.
I'll second that motion. Harry Haas second it.
Uh, yep, I got, I got, Mr. Haas, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to table by Mr. Griffith, the second by Mr. Haas. There's no further discussion at this time. We're voting on whether we table this motion tonight. That's the motion. You vote yes, you're voting to table it. Vote no, there is no table, and we move forward with discussion. Okay, everybody understand?
If I may, Mr. McGinley-
If I may, Mr. McInley, if I referenced it as an ordinance, I was in error.
Okay, but there's no further discussion about the-
And I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Everybody understand? A yes vote tables it, a no vote does not table, we move forward with-
No, it was, it was just to be clear, it was referenced in item number nine of the documents that were sent to council.
Okay.
Not by Romelda, but by the document.
I understand, but right now, we have to move forward with your motion to table, Griffith, then we can get back to that discussion. Okay? Everybody understand? Do we have a motion to table, Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Haas? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
To table this, right?
Yes means to table, no means no. You don't table it, you go on with the discussion.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Perry?
Sorry, no.
Mr. McInley?
No. The motion passes eight to three, I believe, for tabling, so there's no further discussion. The motion is tabled. Moving down to number seven, motion to adopt a resolution transferring $210,000 from the account with the number listed there, which is under other income, the County Reserve Fund with the account number, which is the reserve fund. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
Okay.
Ms. Sedman, yes, yes. Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Very good. Moving down to number eight. Motion to adopt a resolution requesting Luzerne County District Attorney to request the Office of the Attorney General to conduct an investigation into the death of Shaheen Mackey at the Luzerne County Correctional Facility. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Segman?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? On the question?
Motion to table, amendment, motion to table.
All right, Mr. Schnee has a motion to table. Do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
I, I have a question that should be asked in an executive session.
Okay, but you have a motion, do we, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee to table? I'll second it, nobody else, just to, so we get a vote. So we have a motion to table number eight, which is the motion to adopt a resolution requesting Luzerne County District Attorney to request the Office Attorney General to conduct an investigation into the death of Shaheen Mackey, Luzerne County Correctional Facility. No further discussion, motion to table, roll call, vote. You vote yes, motion's table. You vote no, we continue the discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No, this unnecessarily prolongs this discussion.
Ms. House?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Nine, no, no, two yes, no.
Tabled, motion fails. We're back to the motion by Ms. Sedman, second by Mr. Griffith. I don't, I can't hear who that was. Speak up, please. Someone wants to talk in that regard?
Uh, Mr. McInley, I have an amendment to the motion, please. Or to the resolution, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's a resolution. Go ahead, what's the amendment?
Uh, the amendment, the amendment is to, the amendment is to remove the words "to use her discretion" out of the, uh, out of the resolution.
So delete? Is that correct? Delete the words, uh, discretion, user discretion? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, we have amendment by Mr. Griffith. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith's amendment?
Second.
Who's that?
Urban.
Mr. Urban? Okay, Mr. Griffith and Mr. Urban have made a motion and a second for that amendment to remove the words "dealing with discretion." Correct?
Correct.
All right, on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, again, this, the, the district attorney is a, the job description is to be the investigatory arm of Luzerne County. We are going outside of our, our powers to do this. I understand the political pressure is great to look like we're doing something, but the district attorney has already done what I think is a very credible job in this situation. So I think we are doing a service, um, for, again, a little more political reasons. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else with, on the question?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
It's Chris. Uh, Mr. Haas, I commend you. I, I, I'm all for you.
Okay, anyone else?
Uh- Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schnee?
I, I fully agree with Mr. Haas a hundred percent. I mean, legally, we have no standing. That request has been already stated by the DA in the paper. It will be not heard or requested. Legally, the DA stated... This is why, uh, Mrs. Salavantis, uh, was hired, what was voted in as district attorney. And I, I fully agree with Mr. Haas. We're the legislative branch, we're not the criminal branch, and all concerns should be directed to her office and not county council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Sheila.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Segman.
First of all, I do think a letter to Ms. Salavantis is appropriate. This time, we'll see it in writing, uh, signed off by council. And, um, I think I would add an amendment to, ask to see the response.
Okay, let's vote on this amendment, then if you want, make an amendment, you can come back with that, Ms. Segman, okay?
Yes.
All right. Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. McInley?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
I want, I want to be really clear with the members of council. I'm not doubting that the investigation that was done by the district attorney was flawed in any way. I just think it's appropriate to get an unbiased look at this, is, is this situation by someone who is not a county employee, not a county elected official, and if the findings from the attorney general are clear, and they, then it's fine. I don't think that there's going to be a problem if the attorney general looks at it, but I think in the interest of transparency, I think it's appropriate for the attorney general to look at it. I don't want to cast aspersions at all that I think that the district attorney flawed in any way at all, but I do think the appearance of the district attorney doing the investigation into the county manager who used to work for her is certainly an appearance of impropriety that we need to put to rest. So it would behoove us not to do this in, in the interest of transparency and the interest of making sure that there is no appearance of impropriety in the county, not that there is any. It's the appearance. And, you know, people see things differently in the public than we see here in, in the council, uh, chamber. So I, that's why I asked for the investigation. If the attorney general says, "I'm not going to investigate," then that's entirely up to the attorney general to do that. But I think a, a formal letter from council recommending it, and a formal letter from the DA, coming back from the attorney general saying, "No, he won't," then, then the responsibility's on the attorney general at that point. Thank you.
Okay. Just saw you, uh, one slight correction there, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Pedri did not work for Ms. Salavantis. Uh, he was not part of that office under Ms. Salavantis.
In 2010, he was not the deputy?
He was a deputy, but she was not the district attorney in 2010.
Yes, she was.
She took over.
2012.
Stevie Salavantis, 2012. I, I left the DA's office.
She came on board with home role.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you for the correction.
And, uh, we have some other opportunities to do action besides this particular action, personally. And I agree with Mr. Haas and some of the other members' comment. The district attorney's office is separate and distinct from our branch of government, and I think she has an obligation to follow through on the procedures that she feels are appropriate. Anyone else? We're voting on the amendment to delete the words surrounding a discretion of the district attorney made by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban. Roll call, please. Ms. Lawrence, are you muted?
Uh, sorry, Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
For you. Seven no.
Okay. That amendment fails. We still have the motion by Ms. Segman, second by Mr. Griffith.
Uh, Mr. McInley, Steve Urban here. I'd like to make a motion to amend, um, where it says Attorney General's Office, and I would like to either put an and/or Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Criminal Investigation in there to investigate. It's, uh, an arm of the state police that can also investigate.
So you want to add the Pennsylvania State Police?
BCI, which is Bureau of Criminal Investigations.
Okay, Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Investigations.
Yeah, Bureau of Criminal Investigations.
Okay, criminal. You're making that motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Urban?
I'll second that for him.
Who, who said that?
Walter.
Mr. Griffith? On the question?
I was going to say, you know, I'm doing this because I consider them a, a neutral investigatory arm that's in between the Pennsylvania State Attorney General and above, you know, the local police, and, and they're part of law enforcement, and I think they could take a look at it with a fresh set of unbiased eyes, um, and, and rule out from there.
I, I have a statement, Mr. McInley. I, I don't think the state police are necessary unless Attorney General, uh, Shapiro thinks that they are important to involve him in the investigation. I think he certainly has the discretion to pick who his team is and not, I mean, it doesn't have to be the state police to me.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Urban, second by Mr. Griffith, to add in the Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Criminal Investigation Office. You vote yes, we, we put that into the motion at hand. If you vote no, amendment fails, and it does go into motion. Roll call, please.
Sheriff Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. House?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Two yes.
That amendment fails. We still have the motion by Ms. Segman, second by Mr. Griffith. Anything else before we go to roll call? Roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Four, seven.
Motion fails. We're going down to the next motion, but we're going to look at ten first, then go back to nine. Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the creation of Luzerne County Correctional Facility Investigation Committee to investigate, review, and evaluate the conduct policies, standard operating procedures, and protocols of Luzerne County Correctional Facility regarding the recent deaths at the facility. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Sir Urban. On the question?
Uh, yes, this is Leanne.
Go ahead.
So I know I did mention last week that it may not be such a bad idea. However, if we were going to do this, uh, before the charter, there was, uh, the board. So if we wanted to do this, I know you could do an ad hoc with a committee, but if we wanted to make it something that should go into the charter, um, it may not be a bad idea, but that's something that we'd have to discuss and then obviously put on the ballot for the public vote. And, uh, I believe that the makeup should be something different. Uh, maybe I'm incorrect with that, but that's what I believe. I, I don't like the, uh, makeup of this. Who would be on there? I think we need people that have more, um, experience in the correctional facility.
Okay. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's Kendra.
Go ahead.
Um, like, according to the charter, can council actually, um, do this? Because essentially, it's giving a committee more power than council has.
That's a good question. I think the solicitor's office would have to provide us with an opinion.
Uh, I, I mean, we had a discussion about this last week. Uh, this might be more than just amending the charter, the type of amendment that you'd be able to do, uh, placing it on the ballot. This may be an actual, uh, change in the form of government. Uh, the charter, uh, county council cannot create a body that has more authority than council has, and council is not permitted, uh, to get involved in the day-to-day activities of, uh, the executive branch. So, I mean, although council certainly has the authority to create committees and, uh, authorities, um, the question really would come down to what true legal authority would that, uh, body have to act. And, uh, I really can't see anything beneficial, uh, that, that that committee would be able to do, uh, as the charter is written at this point.
Mr. McInley?
Yes, go ahead.
Lynda Haak. Um, Vito, a couple of years ago, we had a 911 investigative committee, um, and that was found to be fine. Um, we conducted, and Ms. Dobash and Mr. Haas ran it, and they conducted, um, an investigation into the policies and procedures of 911. And there were recommendations, and there were things that came to light during that investigation. investigation. There was no direction of 911 personnel. I wouldn't think there would be any direction of correctional facility personnel either, but it certainly would shine a light on, uh, not only, you know, what had been going on before the incident, um, but also the changes that have been made since then.
Yeah, uh, the fact that there may have been, uh, which you're saying, you know, have to take your word for it, there was, uh, if there wasn't investigative committee in the past-
Does anybody dispute that? Mr. McGinley, you were on council.
Oh, I don't dispute the fact there was a 911.
There was a 911 investigative committee.
Yeah.
Document.
That's correct.
I believe that, but, uh, it doesn't make it legal. I mean, there are many times, uh, even since I've been here and, and sitting in this chair since January, where we've made recommendations that council, uh, and/or the county manager may not agree with or may not go along with. We are not a, uh, judicial branch that, that, uh, could, um, override decisions of, of, of the other two branches, uh, but it's, it would be a violation of the charter for, for council, uh, to delegate to this committee or authority or whatever you want to call it, more power than council itself has. So, there's no such thing as past practice, uh, when we're dealing with, uh, issues with the charter. Uh, just because it was something that was, uh, that occurred in the past without challenge, uh, doesn't mean it's something that we could do going forward. Uh, I believe that forcing the county manager to have, uh, a position budget is something that is, uh, goes against the charter, but if the parties allowed it, um, you know, the Office of Law has no authority to, to trump the, uh, what the executive and legislative branches do. But, uh, in this case, to have, uh, council appoint a committee that, that becomes involved in, uh, day-to-day activities of, uh, of a department that is under the charge of the county manager is clearly a violation, uh, of the charter, and certainly is something that I don't believe was contemplated. But whether or not you did it in the past is not, uh, something that, uh, is persuasive at this point, at least from a legal perspective.
Mr. McGinley, am I reading the same resolution? Because I don't really see powers invested in the committee. I see investigative, uh, an investigation into the policies and procedures. I don't see having the, them having the right to change any policies, procedures, just having the right to ask the questions about it. And investigative powers are outlined in the charter for council. I'm not really seeing any authority with this committee other than to be able to ask questions.
Well, I think, uh, my opinion was that the county council certainly has the authority under the charter, uh, to create committees, uh, and authorities and, and other subgroups, uh, and delegate authority to those groups. Uh, I said earlier, though, my issue with this is, is I, I do believe, I have an idea what the intention may be, uh, you could do this. I don't see how, uh, it, it is able to do anything, uh, beneficial. And that's, that's really what, uh, what I had said earlier. So is, is this a, do I view this as an illegal ordinance? No. Or, or illegal, uh, resolution or ordinance? No. But, uh, I don't believe that it will, you'll be able to create anything that has any ability to do any meaningful business. That's what, uh, without actually changing, potentially changing the form of government, or at the very least, I believe is, uh, Mrs. McDermott said, uh, placing something on the ballot.
Mr. McGinley, I have a question.
Mr. Sageman?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is directed to either you, or Harry, or somebody who was on before, um, regarding the 911 committee.
Right.
Uh, Linda, you said Kathy Dobash and, uh, Harry were-
Harry.
-in charge of that.
Mr. Haas, I think, was the person who, uh, or led that group.
So, Harry, who, um, composed that group?
So, um, if I, if I can, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Haas. You have the direct information.
Yeah, there were some issues with 911, some concerns were brought up, and, um, I believe, as I recall, Ms. Dobash wanted to, um, uh, do an investigation, and I saw on the charter you could do an inquiry, which is, i- is, it's, it, it's not binding, it's, it's just examining our government, which, again, I think is entirely appropriate, and I disagree with the solicitor very much. I mean, we did 911, we had made some suggestions, none of them were binding on our 911 staff, and actually, we, we interviewed them. It was a process of, of several months. Uh, I was the chair, Kathy Dobash was there, Rick Marley, Jim Bobek.
So it was only members of council? It was members of council?
It was a subcommittee. It was, it was an ad hoc subcommittee, essentially.
No, that's, Harry, that's fine, but you didn't bring in people from the public?
Well, pu- pu- the public was able to come and give their input, just like any standard council meeting.
They weren't involved in the inquiry until you're, you know, were able to ask questions. I-
They, mm-hmm. Correct, they did not sit on the committee property, but-
Right, that's what I wanted to know.
It was very casual, and it was, you know, it was, it was a conversation that we had. So it, yes, they, nobody had an official title, but the format was that there were, it was an open discussion, and anybody could do that.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, who's this?
This is Dave Pedri.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, just to be clear, there was not investigative committee. That was shut down by county council. I do agree with Mr. Haas, uh, that the manager at the time, Bob Law, said, "Hey, why don't we have an informal inquiry? We'll all sit down, we'll go over all of it, and we'll, we'll put the information out in public." I remember him bringing up giant binders of 911 information for everybody, uh, but it was not a, uh, a, a investigative committee that was approved by a resolution. Uh, it was more of what Mr. Haas said. And I agree, I agree with Mr. Haas.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Go ahead.
Just a little different. The, the inquiry was, was my idea, because, again, like that, that there was a lot of tension, there was a lot of passions, like we have in public life. And, and I thought a full-blown investigation was way over the top, and inquiry is, again, a way to, to do our due diligence, and I think very appropriately so, to look and examine our own government. I, the charter allows that. I think that was very appropriate. The binders were delivered by Mr. Rosenkrantz, very transparent, they were very thick. It was a lot of fun, pleasure reading during the weekend for many, many weeks. And, uh, we had, we had speakers coming in with all the stakeholders, from the staff to the administration to state, um, agencies, to local, um, emergency responders. And, again, it was, it was all entirely appropriate. There was no violation of the charter. I think state statute would allow us to convene a committee, but I think, I think for this, again, if, if we're gonna do this, it should be done right and well, and not, not a knee-jerk reaction. It, this, we keep on coming out, really, essentially, all these three things are the same issue here. If we really want to do this, we got to sit down and see what a committee like this would be like.
I have another question.
What the, what the powers are. I think we just, this is just on the agenda now. It's, there's a lot of passions, and to vote on this, I, I don't think it's appropriate. I mean, if we want to really sit down and look at the proof, we got to, it, it, it's a big view. It's a longer view than just one specific incident. Thank you.
Just, uh, i- i- if I may, there, I, I did do a very quick search, and there was no resolution or ordinance. Uh, so, uh, I would have to, I, I wasn't here in 2014, uh, but I would have to agree with Mr. Haas. It was, uh, it, it was not done by resolution or ordinance, any formation of any kind of in- investigation, uh, committee.
Well, I think, uh, what Mr. Haas said earlier, the word investigation was not used. Inquiry was the word that was used. And it was all members of the council who were involved in the, the committee per se. And I think you're correct. I think, uh, I don't know, maybe Mr. Bobek, I forget who appointed the committee, but there was, uh, there wasn't any resolution.
I have a question.
I appointed the committee.
Okay, Ms. How, okay, very good.
I have a further question. I, I mean-
Go ahead.
The only, the review that we're talking about here, at least it appears to be very similar to what the state has provided us with. And, you know, they did great on that in terms of protocol and policies. So, I'm not sure of that. Not sure of the value of that.
It was.
Okay.
It was resolution 2015-3.
I looked in 14, I'm sorry.
2015-3, it was the beginning of 2015.
Okay, I just looked in 2014.
So it was done by resolution?
Yes, it was.
And it was an inquiry? An inquiry is the word that, yeah. We got away from the word investigation.
And they also did an investigative, uh, report on the, uh, election in the primary in 2015 as well. They had a problem with the primary election, and they did an investigation by council, uh, or they brought a resolution to do an investigation. It's, I think the, uh, the resolution may have failed, I'm not really sure of the vote, how that went, but they did do that.
I don't think it was an investigation, Walter. We may have had something to be voted on, but I don't believe it is an investigation.
Well, oh, and, and the charter is clear, it says that the county council has the power to do that. So I don't, I, it says to make or cause to be made such studies, audits, and investigations applicable to county government as it determines are in the best interest of the county. So I don't understand why we can't, why county council can't make or cause to be made an investigation. I don't, I don't understand where that legal opinion comes from. It's clear in the charter we can.
Well, you heard the information.
Well.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Haas.
Yeah, I agree with Walter, 100%. It, it, it's clearly under the purview of council, absolutely 100%. I also agree with Sheila, that I think at this point, it's unnecessary. The state comes in and they perform that duty and that task. And again, not to say, it, it is just a question of, of where you stand. Now, if you're, if you're not going to support this issue, I would hope that the colleagues would, would really look at this holistically, and therefore not support the $75,000 that we're asked to put the taxpayer on, because-
That'll be up to our next item.
Yes, but it's very relevant, and I would really hope that-
Yeah, these three items are relevant, I think.
Right, right. So, and anyway, what I was saying is that 100%, the charter allows this. I, I don't see how you could see anything differently. And I think the state statute allows it, too. And again, there's absolutely nothing wrong with asking questions. So, uh, again, I don't think we need to at this point, but I agree with Sheila and Walter. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Haas.
Mr. Schnee, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Haas, in your earlier statement before your last one, uh, would you, uh, entertain the motion to table? I'll second it.
What, what, for this?
I don't believe Mr. Haas brought a motion to table, right, Mr. Haas?
No, his question was, this is a knee-jerk reaction, that this should be, uh, thought out and talked about.
Okay.
I'm talking, if, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I agreed with Mr. Haas's statement there.
Yeah, yeah. No, again, if we're gonna do something like this, I mean, you really got to take a look and, and see who, who, what responsibilities would play, what, who has the role, what's the scope, what's the sequence. We, we did all this with the 911.
Who's on the committee and who?
Well, not, not personalities, but I'm just talking about roles, and it, it all has to be, to vote on something like this, you know, and we're gonna, we're gonna form an investigative committee or, or an inquiry committee. Um, is it gonna be standing, is it gonna be long-term, is it gonna be just an ad hoc? I mean, there's, there's all these questions here. But I'm, I'm talking, Mr. Chair, please. And I, I just think, look at this stuff.
Sorry.
When we, the, it's, these are, we're, all these, all the things that are on the agenda tonight are all, it, it's all this, part of the same picture. And I, I, again, if we just look at this, it's already been done. The state has come in and provides the oversight. The DA's office provides the overs- oversight. The federal investigation, um, folks have come in and provided the extra oversight. I mean, what else are, are we really gonna do here? I, again, I, I just think, yes, everybody wants justice, everybody wants equality and fairness, but let's just not just do something to make it look like we're doing something. And I, I just think we're stepping out of bounds here on a lot of different levels. If we're really gonna do the investigative committee, the prison oversight board, which, again, is allowed in state statute, it's allowed in the charter, I believe, let's do it right, and let's just not get passionate about it and get all fired up. Let's do our due diligence here. That's what we're supposed to do. And that's what the public has put their confidence in all of us to do that. Thank you.
Mr. McGinley, Sheila, um, Harry, that was very passionate. And, um-
Amen, Sheila.
And I, I think that, as you said, when I, after I said it, that we received the letter regarding the report from the, um, the prison, which was superb. So, my question is, I know why we're doing this. We all know why we're doing this. The public had an outcry regarding Mr. Mackey's death. That's, that's why we're doing it, because otherwise, our prison was running pretty well. Then we saw this video, and we got very upset, and so did the Mackey family and members of the community. So they all wrote us, and we feel, I forget who said it, probably Harry, that we have to take an action for the sake of taking an action. I think the reason we are doing that is because I know Ms. Salavantis said, she asked the Attorney General, and they said no. Maybe the letter that's drafted this time to the AG's office, uh, not to the AG's office, to Stevens', could be a little more than just that statement we have there requesting and asking, like I said, for a response back. That way, we can show the public, um, either what Mr. Shapiro said, and have that to say, uh, this is what he decided to do, or he's in total agreement with our District Attorney's Office.
Anyone else? If not, we have a motion by Ms. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban. Now it's marked on our, uh, agenda as number 10, but it's actually number 9 this evening. Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the creation of Luzerne County Correctional Facility Investigation Committee to investigate, review, and evaluate the conduct policies, standard operating procedures, and protocols of Luzerne County Correctional Facility regarding the recent deaths at the facility. Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radom?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Eight yes, or excuse me, three yes, no.
Motion fails. Now we go up to the number nine. Uh, motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the attention of outside counsel to conduct a review and evaluation into qualities, policies, standard operating procedures, and protocol of the Luzerne County Correctional Facility. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? One more time. Do we have a motion? Very none? We move on. Move down to the number 11. Motion to adopt a resolution declaring a vacancy on the Luzerne slash School, School College County Workforce Investment Board. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Sheila.
Sageman, do we have a second?
Second.
What was that, second?
Kendra.
Kendra?
Yeah.
Very good. We have a motion, a second, to accept the, uh, to adopt a resolution declaring the vacancy. And we have the letter from the gentleman who is, uh, resigning for that board. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas? Ms. How?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radom?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog? Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
None?
Mr. McGinley? Before we go to public comment, I just want to make a statement that the reason I did not make a motion for that resolution that was previously offered in number 10, I just want to be on the record to state that I don't think it's appropriate for the manager to investigate himself. And that's why there was no motion by me to make, to move that forward.
Number 10, you made the motion, you're talking, 10, which?
No, I'm talking number 9.
Let's put it that way.
Number 9. There was no motion or second made. I did not make a motion because I don't think it's appropriate.
Number 9 on our agenda, but number 10 on our, when we switched around now. You're right.
Right.
I don't know what you're saying, Walter. What did you say?
Number 9 was the motion to adopt regarding resolution authorizing the retention of outside counsel.
Correct.
It did not get a motion, it did not get, it did not get a second.
Right.
And I'm, on the record, I want it to be stated that I did not make a motion or a second or vote on that because it's not appropriate for the manager to investigate himself.
Why would the manager be investigating himself?
Because he's, he's the one that's hiring the company.
I, I think that.
Actually, council would be hiring the company, but Mr. McGinley, why are we even talking about this at this point?
Yeah.
I just want to be on the record as to why it didn't happen.
He wanted to make a statement, and he has the right to make a statement, but we're moving on at this point. Public comment, please.
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raybo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Yes, first of all, I would take issue with what the Solicitor DeLuca said as far as with the formation of any oversight board or committee, simply because in the state statute, specifically under Title 61, Section 1723, the county jail oversight board, it allows for second-class and home rule counties to form a county jail oversight board to look into policies and procedures with regards to correctional facilities, county correctional facilities. And as to Councilwoman McDermott's question as far as composition of that committee or oversight board or committee, it says in the state statute, it says, under Part B, the board shall be composed of the county chief executive, which would be the county manager, two judges of the Court of Common Pleas, one of whom shall be the president judge or his designee, who shall be a judge, and one judge appointed by the president judge, the county sheriff, the county controller, the president of county council or his designee, and three citizen members as provided for in subsection C, which would be the qualifications of citizen members of that board. So, it's all spelled out in state statute. So, if you recall, Mr. Chairman, and I believe members of the council who were on with you for the, for the time in 2014 or 15, they, when I believe Councilwoman Dobash brought up the county, this county oversight board, jail oversight board, the solicitor, the associate, assistant solicitor, Ms. Craig, said that it wasn't able to be considered by council because it would take away purchasing power from the warden and the county manager. But I would ask for the county manager and the warden to ask the state if that, if there was a possibility, and the solicitors, if there was a possibility to form that board without the purchasing, taking away the purchasing power as per our county home rule charter gives to the manager and the warden for the purchases. So, and the council as well. So, I would ask for maybe that, that proposal or that solution to be considered because that is allowed by state law. And also, if you look at Bucks County, I think I said this to Solicitor Crocamo a few years back, that Bucks County was given, ruled in a litigation by a federal judge that they had to form this county jail oversight board. So, I'm just saying that that could be considered as an option.
Thank you.
Secondly, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Raybo, you have your time, it's up to this.
I just wanted, my last sentence would be, can we have a commemoration for September 10th of 7, you know, the anniversary?
Send me the information, Mr. Raybo, and we'll get something for that. Please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, please?
Mr. Chairman, I just want, if you don't mind, I just want to respond to that, that the charter specifically eliminated the prison board, and what he was referring to was the prison board. So, it is not something that's provided for, it's provided by state law. If our home rule charter had incorporated those terms, which our home rule charter specifically eliminated that prison board, so.
Council could vote on it. Council could vote.
Mr. Raybo, please, there's another gentleman who wanted to speak.
Thank you, Chairman McGinley.
Who's that?
This is Rodney.
Go ahead.
I just wanted council and the chair to understand, I feel that the district attorney is doing a dynamite job in every aspect of Luzern County. My input here was, I expect to, being sure that there wasn't any biased calls being made with regard to this case of Mr. Mackey. The fact of the matter is, the settlement did get handed down, $3 million to pay down, that's the cost of $50,000 for the taxpayers. So, that, that in a sense is taking responsibility for things obviously weren't handled properly. So, it has nothing to do with taking jabs at the DA, district attorney, Mrs. Salavantis, I appreciate her, and the jobs to do diligence for the Luzern County taxpayers is doing. This is on the basis of an unbiased view on the whole subject. And now, as to, I hope this isn't the wrong time to bring this up, but Wolf, Governor Wolf has allowed more people to dine in, in restaurants. So, that means the capacity for seating being more friendly to larger gatherings. So, that would lead me, the next question is, when are we going to move forward with public meetings in a public setting? In a venue where everybody can present their cases at the podium? I think that's something that we can move forward on. If the governor's saying that in dining is, is now becoming more a comfortable situation, and death rate is lower, and I just thought that I'd bring that up. Thank you for hearing my.
Thank you. Members of the public. Members of the public who would like to address council, please.
Hello, this is Jared. The last three of phone number 911, you're currently muted in Teams, so use star six to unmute if you have public comment. That is star six.
Okay, does everybody hear that? That's phone number 6900911.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Mantle?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yep. I have to bring up something that I read in the paper, that the, the governor wants to have the counties to, all the counties to pay this rain tax. Is there any validity to that, or is that just newspaper garbage?
Mr. Mantle, I think the article you're referring to was, was part of a conference call that was last week. Mr. Griffith was on the consul, was on the call, along with myself and several members of the county administration, buildings, grounds, planning, zoning, et cetera.
Right.
I don't think you have that correct. There are some things that have to be done there. It's part of Phase 3, which is a different phase than the stormwater. So, I don't think that applies the way I think you stated it at this point.
I, I, like I said, it was very confusing, and, and my first thought was, are they going to use the county to enforce the, the stormwater fee? And, and that was my biggest fear because of the fact that I know.
We have no, we have no part of the stormwater fee.
Right. Dave Pedri didn't put in his budget any money for the stormwater, and I would like to know why. Is there a backroom deal going on with Bloming Valley Sanitary Authority? Or is it, you know, the transparency there, it seems that there's not very much. Is everybody afraid of the authority of this Bloming Valley Sanitary? Or, you know, is this talk a taboo? I mean, we've been fighting it for two years now, and the county didn't want to get behind it. And now, all of a sudden, the governor's going to put something on each county to collect this stuff in the, in the third phase, or, you know, I just, I wanted to know what's going on.
Well, I don't think we have any clear answers yet because a lot of the information has not been formulated. So, until we get some information, I don't think there's anything to provide to, that will help you with that, Mr. Mantle.
Okay, and then like Mr. Raybo said, the dedication to the people for 9/11, there should be something.
I don't think it was talking about 9/11, I think it was talking about that ladder and mines massacre.
Oh, okay. But I'm talking about 9/11.
Right.
I think we should have something and, and praise the people that instead of running away from the, of the dilemma, they faced it head-on. And, and that's the, the toll of the leaders. Leaders face the problem head-on. They don't run away from the problem or try to duck the problem, they face the problem head-on. They don't skirt around anything. If you're going to say something and you're going to do something, just be honest about it. I mean, don't, don't dance around something and, and, just like with the Mackey case, let's just get it over with already. Because if you don't, it, it's going to fester into something where the public is not going to trust anybody in government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mantle. Anyone else from the public? Others, members of the public. I see a gentleman, Mr. Matt. I see your picture. Are you on for, for some reason, do you want to comment, or?
No, I, I'm really just, good evening to everyone, I'm just observing your meetings and.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe you had, you wanted to say something, and I wanted to give you an opportunity. I could see your picture and.
No, I was visiting you in person before, looking forward to doing that.
Okay.
You know, subsequent to that. But I'm just observing and listening to the discussion.
Very good, thank you. I do have one email that came in. Mr. Rochell, Jeffrey Rochell, understand that you're considering a bill to defund our local libraries. I'd like to encourage you to help our libraries. They provide an essential service to our communities and shouldn't be defunded largely because of COVID. Without our libraries, only the well-to-do would have access to education materials, which are needed by all in the community for the community to thrive. Thank you for your help. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. McGinley, before we adjourn, if there's nobody else from the public, I have something I wanted to ask.
Okay, one sec.
If I could.
We'll give them one more call to see if there's a member of public, and then you'll have a chance, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you.
Other members of the public?
Brian Shiner.
Go ahead, Mr. Shiner.
To all of you council members who voted no tonight to further any investigation of what happened in our prison, I'd like to tell you, you mustn't be following the, the news because we have a crisis in our country. Racism and bigotry are alive and well. People of color are being mistreated to the point of death. And it has reached across pretty much every town and city in our country, and it's here. If the thing sweeping to the rug is going to get out of Luzern County, you're quite mistaken. If anything, it's going to heighten it. And all of you who voted no, all of you who refuse to allow any further investigation, or rather, demand further investigation by our attorney general, I'll be the first ones to cry and say, oh, look what's happening here. Oh me, oh my. You need to do what you're elected to do. There's a problem. It needs to be researched. And if for nothing better, and hopefully nothing better, than for the investigation to say that our employees did everything above board. That needs to be dead, one for all by an outside investigation. Not by our DA, who is, by her own admission, conflicted by checking into anything in the executive or legislative branches. That's her own words. But we need an outside investigation to come in and say, everything was done right, the warden and his staff are acting the way they should, and there's no wrongdoing here of any kind whatsoever. But you need to push this through and do it. Not vote no, not try and sweep it under the carpet and hope it'll go away, because it's not. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Mr. Griffith?
Yes, I have a question. I was looking at the contracts over the, over the weekend, and there was a contract that was approved by the Office of Law regarding CySoft contract software, and it was for $27,000.
Yes.
And it's budgeted, and it's budgeted into next year, and our charter says that that has to be approved by council, if it's $25,000 or more into the future year, into any future calendar year. And I would like to know why council did not approve that contract.
Because it, it starts September 1st, the $20,000 will be paid of COVID, under COVID money, although it was originally budgeted for this year, and the 7,000, the remainder is 7,000 in maintenance fees, which will be paid out of this year's budget. So, it's, the start date is 9/1/2020.
But it, but it is a one-year contract, correct?
It is. It is a one-year contract.
And so, it's a 27, it's a $27,000 contract for, and it goes into a future year?
It's a $20,000 contract, which the money was budgeted for this year. The $7,000 is a maintenance fee. The $20,000 was approved with COVID money to have our electronic contracts. So, it, it would not need council approval.
We have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Walter.
Senator Hendra?
Ms. Radel, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 In the opposition, the abstentions, non-heard. It's now 7:28, we'll reconvene at 7:40 for the work session. Thank you. 7:40. Jared, do we stay on this meeting?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Do we stay on this meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.